Welcome to the regular council meeting of Tuesday, March twenty first, two thousand and twenty three at four forty. In council chambers and via Zoom. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of Gonquin peoples, including Beaverhouse First Nation, and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of Algonquin, Inishewa, Ojibwe, Cree, and Métis people in our community since time immemorial, and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. Call to order in a moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda.
Moved by Councilor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councilor La Chaba, being resolved with the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, March twenty first, two thousand and twenty three, be approved as circulating.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous. Item number three, declaration of a cunicer interest. Councilor Owens.
So item seven point two, I don't, in discussion with the interior commissioner, I don't have a cunicer interest. But as, because there's specific criteria as well, because my name appeared on the letter. Just for the optics of it, I'm going to step away from the table for this part of the discussion.
Okay, thank you. Anything further, Councilor Shaba?
Yeah, I think I'm in the same boat as well. I don't think that I have a cunicer interest, but, but advice, I'm told, so I guess when in doubt, just declare one. So I'm going to be declaring one on item number, item six point five.
Thank you. Anything further?
I will read that.
Oh, yes.
No, because I don't have the cunicer interest. Yeah, the interior commissioner was very clear, I don't have an interest, so I don't have to declare any.
Anyways, I, La Chaba. I'm declaring direct deemed or indirect cunicer interest on the agenda of the meeting dated March twenty first, two thousand and twenty three. It's an open session. Agenda item is six point five. The agenda title is parade permit. Holy Name Parish Way of the Cross Annual Parade. It is indirect because I belong to this body. And my nature of interest is that I belong to the Holy Name Church. Signed, me myself, La Chaba.
Thank you, sir. Item number four, petitions and delegations. None are noted. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations, five point one, March seventh, two thousand and twenty three.
Moved by Councilor Casey Owens, seconded by Councilor David Dickens, being resolved in council for the minutes of the following meeting. Minutes of the regular meeting of council held Tuesday, March seventh, twenty twenty.
All in favor? Opposed? None? Most carry unanimously. Item number six, reports of municipal officers in communications. Six point one, request to cancel sales of three McKelvey Avenue, lot seventy four and seventy five, M one one two on Boulder. Jenna McNaughton, planning administrator.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to council. I have a report here that's requesting to cancel two land sales that have previously been approved. So the first one we'll talk about is three McKelvey. This was passed at a meeting in November, two thousand and twenty one. Since that time, we attempted to make contact with the applicant through our legal team and through theirs, and we haven't been able to get any response. We did send some letters and made some phone calls. We just haven't been able to get in contact with this individual, so we're just looking at canceling this land sale. There is a small amount of a hundred and eighty dollars that will be associated with closing this file. The second one is for two lots on Boulder Street. This land sale was approved last year in April. And the applicant has since requested to cancel the land sale. The, there is no legal cost associated with closing this file.
Any questions or concerns? None noted. We'll have the reading of the motion.
Moved by Councilor Rick Owen, seconded by Councilor Patrick Kylie.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
So, yeah. To Madam Mayor. What happens with land? Do we put it up for, like, does it come back to council for consideration, or what's that cost now? To Madam Mayor, to Councilor Dickens, what we do is we put the property back on the surplus land list. So it is available for sale to any individual that would like to submit an application. We don't necessarily advertise that it's for sale, but it is on that surplus land listing.
Thank you.
No problem. Moved by Councilor Rick Owen, seconded by Councilor Patrick Kylie, being resolved at report number two thousand and twenty three, D E V fourteen, entitled Request to Cancel Sales of Three McKelvey Avenue, and lots seventy four and seventy five, M one twelve on Boulder Street, be received. And the council canceled one sale at Three McKelvey Avenue to Wabashar Hussein, and the council canceled one sale of lots seventy four and seventy five, M one twelve, Boulder Street, Goodwood personality, and finally, that apply law repealing by law number twenty one, oh ninety, and by law number twenty two thirty, we brought forward three readings on March twenty first, twenty twenty three.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted, and we carry unanimously. Six point two, early access agreements with Hydro One Networks Incorporated, K four transmission line, Jenna McNaughton, planning administrator.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to council, we received a request from Hydro One Networks to expand their existing easement just slightly outside of what they have. This is in relation to the K four transmission line. We had a request similar to this at some point last year, but they've come to realize that they need to actually extend up a little bit further. So they're just looking at entering into an early access agreement at this time, and they will be bringing forward the easement agreements after they are able to survey out the land. There is some consideration that they will give us for entering onto our land, so it's about twenty-two thousand five hundred for each application, so that includes the access agreement, signing of the auction agreement, and then accepting an appraisal report, and then there's an additional hundred and fifteen percent of the appraised market value, so we won't know that until they're actually finished with the survey of the property. So they're hoping to have this done.
Any questions, comments? None noted. Before we have the reading of the motion, I just wanted to say this is Jenna's last council meeting before she leaves us for maternity leave. I just want to thank her so greatly for her expertise and her reports when she comes to council. She's always a pleasure because she always gives the best, most clear reports, and we just, we are going to miss you. And we want to say congratulations, and we will see you in a year, so. Oh, sorry, Councilor Shaba.
I hope you bring the babies to the council meeting for the first time.
Oh, yeah. But it's a liberation, I'll be here. Yeah.
Mayor, just saying. And while we're on that subject, I'd like to welcome Brooklyn. In the team, it's kind of nice to see a former student, like, this gray hair is there for a reason. It's nice to see former students coming back to us as employees, and so it's, it's welcome aboard.
Excellent. Very good. Okay, Madam Chair.
Moved by Councilor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councilor La Chaba, be resolved at report number two thousand and twenty three, D E V fifteen, entitled Early Access Agreements with Hydro One Networks Inc., K four transmission line be received, and that the mayor municipal clerk be authorized to exclude forward early access agreements and all appropriate recent documents as be, as may be required by Hydro One Networks Inc., and finally, that apply law authorizing the execution of early access agreements and any related easement agreements and subsequent amendments be brought forward for three readings on March twenty first, twenty twenty three.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimously. Item number six point three, town of Kirkland Lake, ten-year road reconstruction plan. Director of Public Works.
Good for having you, through you, Madam Mayor, council. I'm here to speak about our newly developed ten-year road reconstruction plan. So as a whole, a plan like this can become particularly useful to forecast capital expenditures and brings a new level of transparency for our council members and our residents. Please note that when we speak of reconstruction, it means the full replacement of the infrastructure, which are the water mains, stormwater system, the sanitary system. It also speaks of the replacement of the concrete curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and of course, the asphalt surface. This is important to know because there's some years within this ten-year plan that you'll notice that only involves asphalt replacement. The Public Works Department was once equipped with an engineering team whose one of main tasks was to prepare these projects for future construction. Now that we don't have an engineering team, we have to fully rely on the services of the design consultants to put these projects together for us so that we can be ready to issue construction tenders when funding is available. Keeping in mind that it can take up to a full year to design a project, our goal is to design one project per year, while at the same time tender out one construction project per year, again, depending on funding availability. For two thousand and twenty-three, it's our year number one, and this would involve the design to reconstruct part of Taylor Avenue. And since we don't currently have a design project to put out to tender this year, we opted for a asphalt-only contract for year one. This would involve pulverizing the existing asphalt and replacing it with a new super paved layer of asphalt. I'm sure that a key question that some may have in their mind is, well, how were these areas selected and not other areas? Within the last two years, we had our roads professionally assessed by a company that's called Streetscam. The data they provided shows us the existing condition of the asphalt surface for every single street. Another major factor that has to be considered is the age of the infrastructure. Well, over fifty percent of our infrastructure dates back to the nineteen thirties. So using these two major factors along with other factors such as traffic density, safety consideration, and road types, well, this is the selection we came up with. Yes, there are other options, but probably many other options. But, you know, with the information that was available to us, our department has narrowed it down to these projects for the next ten years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I definitely, before I open for debate, I definitely want to congratulate you and your team. This is something that council has asked for time and time again, and you just knocked it out of the park as far as I'm concerned. It's really good to see measurable targets and to be open and transparent, saying these are, even though we want to do these projects, it all depends on funding. So just excellent report. Thank you so for, so much for that. I'll open the floor for comments. Councilor Ranger.
To you, Madam Mayor, to, I don't know, I don't know your name, I haven't met you.
Stephon Poplar.
Hi, nice to meet you. Stephan, it's more of a aesthetic question, but I have seen current trends where instead of between the roadway and the sidewalk, I'll call it between the curb, actually, and the sidewalk, instead of grass, pavement, or asphalt, is that a continued plan, even within the residential areas?
Well, within the residential areas, it's usually practice to try to reinstate the existing conditions, so if you would see grass mulberry, then that's what we would reinstate under somebody make or find a reason to change that. So we'll, that would be our goal, it would be to reinstate in the same fashion that for the existing conditions. Some things that may change is the type of curves, for example, instead of having regular concrete curves where we tend to favor drop curves. It's less damaging to our graders, and as you noticed, the the greaver plows are very aggressive on these curves and they rip them apart over the years, so by having a drop curve, for example, we'll stretch on the watch of those curves.
Councilor Shaba?
Yeah, thank you very much, through you, Madam Mayor. I don't, I'm just trying to find out the stuff that you sent to us, but I just got my iPad back, which now. You indicated that, I guess, the first one to be done would be just to resurface, right? Did I get that right? From now to the first year, you have to project. Taking the old asphalt out and then put the new one in.
Correct, and what we're opting, a method of saving costs is if there's no reason to fully remove the asphalt and discard of it, which is expensive when it comes to the holiday, another method is to pulverize it in place when suitable. This is usually very favorable as far as quality of the underlying layer because it will mix that asphalt with the granular underneath, giving you a better solid base. So this is something that is usually very favorable.
Yeah, I understand, but what I'm going, my question is that if that's all we're doing, and we always talk about digging pipes underneath those streets, so we're not really addressing those, if there, if there are, where you do now, and there are not, I guess there are not. So I'm just thinking maybe why not build two birds with one stone if you're going to be doing this street? And I know a lot of residents are very, very, shall we say, upset, you know, all of a sudden constructing this year, and then they're back next year, and then they're back next year. So really, is there a way to not at least get a little bit of more funding to add those pipes to the place? And then do your resurfacing, then you're done with that street for the next twenty years or so?
Yes, it's definitely favorable to usually change the infrastructure at the same time, but there's an enormous dollar value associated to it, which is why that we have to take the time to fully have them designed before putting them up to tender, because when you're dealing with the infrastructure, you're not talking about hundreds of thousands, you're talking about millions. So that's the reason why we have to design it one year and then hopefully construct it next, or when it comes to that. But for year one, like you said, it's just asphalt, and we selected areas where only asphalt would be better suited, instead of going and digging up the infrastructure, because the infrastructure is deemed young enough. So in those areas.
Yeah, that's my point, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Councilor Owens.
Thank you through, Madam Mayor. I'm excited to see this, finding community plan and people. I wouldn't want to be on the list of the streets that are not being fixed. Unfortunately, there's just so many streets that can fix at the time. My question is, though, in previous years, like last year, the paving on certain, or a few of our streets didn't get done until October. The week after started to snow. Now it's melting, and that asphalt's already broken. It's already heaving, there's huge cracks going through it. So in this case, are we going to wait again till, I know it has to do with the contractor availability, but are we going to wait till the end of the summer to do this? Are we going to be able to start earlier and get these done so we can actually use streets that are now broken and fix them?
Through you, Mayor, to council. The sooner the budget gets approved, the sooner we can send out a tender threshold. Paving contractors definitely would prefer that municipality comes up with a paving contract in spring rather than middle of summer, because they heavily concentrate on their larger empty contracts for asphalt. So we end up at the end of the season where they're trying to fill us in best they can. You're absolutely correct. The sooner in the season that we get the tender out, the better availability they'll have to help us.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Going around the table, Councilor Owen.
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. I can hardly sit my, I'm still happy, still excited. This is a moment for record. Ricky is happy at council. I've been pushing for, ever since I got out of council, to get away from the year-to-year planning, and I was only asking for five years, and you come up with a ten-year plan, so you get a gold star for sure. The question about infrastructure under the road, Tweedsmere Road, that was supposed to be done a number of years ago, and it was in a budget, and for some reason it didn't get done. My understanding is that the infrastructure is not under the road on Tweeds there, it's off to the side. And we have other streets in town where the infrastructure is not under the road. And we do have maps of, not always one hundred percent accurate, of which streets they are. And so I think that should be taken into consideration when considering how to stretch your money. If we, if we have a street that needs to be done, like, and it doesn't have infrastructure underneath it, maybe we do that ahead of another street that needs to be done but has infrastructure underneath it. And in terms of, of curves, in my travels in north, northern Ontario, I noticed that most communities our size don't have curves, or they don't have the amount of curves that we have. My, if memory serves you right, there's no curves on Tweed's there. I don't think.
You're correct, it's all dishes.
So, so why would we put curves back? Why would we put curves in? If we've got a system there that's already working. When I drive through Anglehart, I don't see a lot of curves. When I drive through Chaplow, I didn't see any curves. I'm just looking at ways to, to stretch limited funds that we have, and these are just, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not saying do it. The other thing is the rate pairs have to understand that we have a ten-year plan, and this council is hoping to follow through for the following first four years. But if the money is not there, we cannot continue with the plan. The plan will be there. And when the money's available, the next council or this council can pick it up where we left off. Because I don't want people thinking, oh, this is great, my road's going to be done next year. Well, hopefully your roads can be done this year, if we have money. And again, thank you so much for a plan. A long-term plan.
Thank you, that, Councilor Owen. Councilor Kylie?
Yeah, I got it handed to you, as Rick said, you should get the gold star for this. Too many years in the past, it's been like wherever the dirt lands. Like, I really think that this, this has been done professionally and well thought of, so congratulations on your part, your department. For curiosity, the infrastructure on Taylor Avenue, how old is it?
Nineteen thirty to nineteen thirty-five. Which is extremely common for all the streets surrounding it, actually. They're all of the same age.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Dickens?
Through you, Madam Mayor, the director. I echo a lot of the comments, and I'm very hopeful with, with the plan, and it, it gives us a guide for our finances. I do have a question, though. Last summer, somebody from the town was going around with, I think it was pink or orange paint where sidewalks were really uneven. And I only noticed this because you, you said Tweed's mere up to McCfee, but just past McCfee is the school?
Yes.
And that's where a lot of those lines are. So is that totally going to be disregarded under this plan, or is there a plan to fix some of the really grievous sidewalks? Because there's a school there as well.
Yes. Through the mayor to council. Yes, you're absolutely correct. Our road reconstruction plan here does not speak solely to sidewalks. It would speak to sidewalks within these areas that we want to reconstruct. It would be nice to also have a ten-year sidewalk replacement plan. But no one's going to be happy with the numbers. So what I'm trying to do, what our department is trying to do right now is to at least have funding available within our operating budget so that we can at least replace it some during the summer, get what's at least worth. The, the orange paint that you saw, yes, the roads department gives our students sometimes to identify these, and we try to rectify as many as we can during the summer, but our budget only allows us to do so much, and we have a lot of sidewalk. Surprisingly, for the size of town, there's a lot of concrete sidewalks. But that's something that I can repair. A replacement plan. But it depends if you guys want it.
Just to reiterate what Stephan said, the orange paint is actually a standard, is it not, within?
It's to meet our minimum maintenance standards.
Yeah, and that comes from what regulation or what is it, MTO?
It's the same regulation that we utilize for our winter maintenance programming. Basically, identify that if you're outside of tolerance for, I'm just giving you an example, but if there's a bump of ten millimeters or more, it needs to be rectified with the next amount of days. It's difficult to meet all those deviations, like the deficiencies that we have on our sidewalks, they're just very, very numerous. There's a lot of them.
Yeah, so that spray paint, it definitely comes from a regulation, like this is what I'm getting at, that yeah, it's not just something that the town of Kirkland Lake chose to do, it's actually what is stated to do in a government regulation.
Correct, we're trying to identify what does not beat regulation.
Okay, thank you, sir. The Councilor Ranger?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Stephan, and this may not be a question that you can answer. And maybe it goes back to council. Has there been any discussion or conversation through past councils or through your department to look and assess at having sidewalks on only one side of the street? And or what would be the determination to remove curves as Councilor Owen had, had a conversation about? Is there been conversation that was done and then this list was made, or is this something that would be done in between this project and the amount of money that potentially could be sought after? And on that same note, so it's a two-part question, has there been any conversation about increasing or adding four-way stops in these areas that we're looking at also doing repaving?
Okay, true. I'll start by speaking in regards to the pitch, for example, that you mentioned, removing curbs or eliminating curves that are already in place is probably not something we want to entertain, because usually the curbs are put in place if there are like on Tweed's mere, there's ditching. So it's either you have ditches or you redirect your water with curves to catch basins. So you'll have to ask your other question.
Well, this, removing sidewalks so they're only on one side of the street instead of having them on both sides?
I think that the sidewalks will have to be reviewed as a whole, because there's a lot of sidewalks that we don't maintain during the winter months. Some of them look a lot worse, or it looks like they've been abandoned. I agree that some should be removed and abandoned and reassessed as to whether they're useful. I do agree that that's a negative look, I guess.
Any further questions? Councilor Owen?
Yes, through you, worship. If we're looking at removing sidewalks, then I suggest we have public meetings. Because I bought my house, it had sidewalks on either side of the road. Council decided to redo my, well, they redid the street, and they took the sidewalks out, and I had young children. Okay, so I don't believe, if we're talking about removing sidewalks, I don't believe that we can do that without the public consultation.
It wouldn't be done.
Because I may not have bought my house if I'd known there wasn't going to be sidewalks for my kids to play on. Thank you.
Anything further from council? Thank you, Stephan. I'll have the reading of the motion.
Moved by Councilor Casey Owens, seconded by Councilor Rick Owen, be resolved at report number two thousand and twenty three, D W two, entitled Town People May Ten-Year Road Reconstruction Plan, be received for advantage.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimously. Item six point four, Kirkland Lake Drinking Water System Operational Plan Update, Stephan Borthing, Director of Public Works, again.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor, council. I'm here to present the updated operational plan for Kirkland Lake's drinking water system, which was prepared by our board. Since the last revised plan in two thousand and nineteen, our C A O and our mayor have changed. This is considered to be a major change for these plans. Therefore, the new plans, the new plan needs to be reendorsed by the new C A O and the new mayor on the half couch. All other changes that were made to the operational plan are considered extremely minor and have no bearing on the overall scope of the plan. Uh we're asking council to approve and reendorse the updated drinking water systems operational plan. I do have Brian Springer here with me today, who's our manager of operations and environmental services. Uh to whom you can address any specific questions you may have regarding this updated plan. Thank you.
Yep.
Just a uh second correction, uh the the plan will be endorsed by the mayor and the clerk.
Oh, yes, yeah. Okay, thank you for that. Any questions? Council Shaba.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair, um since you're here, we have to have you here. Can you say a little bit more about some of the things that uh changes that you're you guys were talking about?
Well, actually. Madam Mayor. And uh councillors, um these reports are actually reviewed annually. And it's the best management practice, so it's a continuous improvement. And what you see here are very uh minor changes. You know, it'll be a word that's been changed from and to something else. Uh very, very, very minor, actually. Thank you.
Anything further from council? Council Owen.
Thank you, through you, your worship. Um I'm just looking at. Procedure three, three point one. And I think I know the answer, but I'd like the clarification. Because it says Aqua is contracted operating authority for the Kirkland drinking water system, which includes the Lionel Sheriff Water Filtration Plant. And the Kirkland Distribution System. But the Kirkland Distribution System is and is uh offered is looked after by town employees. Um is this referring to, and I can't, I apologize, I don't remember the uh the title. But I know we appoint Aqua as the overall.
Your.
Yeah, is that what that refers to?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Anything further from council, comments, questions?
Hi, thank you, gentlemen. I'll have the reading of the motion. Moved by Council Patrick Kylie, seconded by Council Janet Ranger. Be resolved that report number twenty twenty three PW four entitled Kirkland Lake Drinking Water System Operational Plan Update be received. And the council approved the amendments thereto and endorsed the incorporation of the town of Kirkland Lake's Drinking Water System Operational Plan dated March first, twenty twenty three. As updated, and that the mayor and municipal clerk be authorized to execute the required documentation showing council's endorsement. Of the incorporation of the town of Kirkland Lake's updated drinking water system operational plan. And finally, that an execution by law be brought forward for three readings on March twenty first, twenty twenty three.
All in favor? Opposed, noted, item carried unanimous. Thank you so much. Item six point five. Request for parade parade permit, holy name of Jesus parish, we have the cross annual parade.
Uh good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council, the holy name of Jesus parish is requesting permission to impose their annual. We have the cross celebrated parade on Friday, April seventh, between the hours of eleven A M and one P M. In terms of agency comments and concerns, the town's uh Public Works and Fire and Emergency Services Department cited no objections with the request. Uh the Kirkland Lake detachment of the Ontario Provincial Police also cited no objections or concerns with the request. Um as noted in the report, historically, no fees or certificate of insurance have been collected from the requesting organization. It is my understanding that the parade predominantly carries on by use of sidewalks for venue from venue to venue. Uh there are no formal road closure requirements or statutory public notices uh or statute of public notice requirements. Uh the parish will be encouraged to contact the Kirkland Lake detachment of the O P P to secure police escort for the duration of the parade. And to note, the parish had requested um uh for a member representative of council to perform a reading. At the municipal office on Kirkland Street on behalf of the town during parade and Council Kylie has so volunteered. And this is my summary of the report and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions from the public? Council Owen.
Yeah, this parade's gone on for, I would say, at least thirty years without incident. And um it's certainly something that's looked forward to. It's it's uh. It's also a multi uh denominational parade. They encourage the other churches to stay part of it as well. I certainly have no problem with their request.
Anything further, any comments, questions from council?
Not noted, I'll have a reading of the motion. Moved by Council Tracy Owens, seconded by Council Dolly Dykens. Be resolved that report number twenty twenty three C L K ten entitled request for parade permit. Holy Name of Jesus Parish, we have the cross annual parade be received. And the council directed that a parade permit be issued to the Holy Name of Jesus Parish for April seventh, twenty twenty three. And finally, the council hereby waived the one hundred dollar permit fee requirements as outlined in bylaw eighty six sixty five.
All in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous. Please have Mr. Shaba answer. Thank you. Item six point six, twenty twenty three Operational and Capital Budget Lloyd Crawford Treasurer. And before Mr. Crawford begins, it's just a reminder that we are receiving this for information this evening. To allow us time to review and digest before the public meetings and departmental divi- uh and divisional presentations. On March twenty ninth and a special meeting for capital budget presentation on April third. Budget deliberations will start for us in earnest um at the meeting on April eleventh. As Mr. Crawford will explain, council will be able to email any questions to mayor treasurer and C A O. Throughout this process, uh you will receive answers. And then um the treasurer will bring all those questions back to council for transparency. But I'll allow um Mr. Crawford to um explain the process. So thank you, sir. Oh, yeah, sorry, Alan C A O.
Um through you, Madam Mayor, to members of council. Uh when staff first began the internal budget process a number of weeks ago. Our first draft budget resulted in a presentation at council of approximately fifteen percent increase in tax levy. Recognizing we need to do better, staff worked diligently to find efficiencies to reduce this increase. A lot of tough decisions were made and challenging discussions were having. But we reached an increase of approximately four point three five percent. That would enable the town to deliver the services that rate pairs expect in a physically prudent manner. While also planning for investing in the future. This four point three five percent translates to an increase of ninety dollars per year for the average residential property owner. It's important to remember that town Kirkland Lake has been able to increase reserves, our reserve funds over the last few years. Treasury is recommending using approximately two point five million in reserves and reserve funds to limit the tax levy. Increase to the approximate four point three five percent. Although we are not yet able to properly forecast twenty twenty two reserves and reserve funds. Given the year end and audit for twenty twenty two are not yet complete. We believe the amount of reserves and reserve funds will increase for twenty twenty two. Given some large tax supplementals that were received, thus good news. So why the four point three five percent increase? Well, there are lots of factors, but I just want to mention a few. Labor and related costs have the effect across all departments. The pay equity and compensation review that was completed implemented resulted in a three percent increase. The annual cost of living adjustment increases two percent. And many employees will be still to receive a step increase in their positions for twenty twenty three. Council also approved a new asset management plan in twenty twenty two. The asset management plan took into account the core assets of municipality. In order to maintain, update, or replace these assets going forward. The asset management plan recommended one point seven percent increase annually with the tax levy. Also, it's important to remember that this number will increase. Once the new asset management plan, with all assets including buildings and equipment, is to be to be completed twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Also, there are many factors that are beyond our control. High inflation rates, high interest rates, supply chain issues, and yes, COVID still around. All having impacts on all municipal budgets, not just Kirkland Lake. For example, Carver's Lake, Carver Lakes, looking at three percent increase this year. London, three point one percent increase, Thunder Bay, four point four, Sudbury, four point six. North Bay, four point six one, Hansville, five point two nine, Toronto, five point five. And a township of tiny, ten point eight two. It should be noted that most of the small municipalities have not yet completed the budget process. Also, this information was taken from public announcements, not directly from municipality. But the point being, the days of zero budgeting or minimal increases are most likely over. We are in a new reality. Again, the four point three five percent increase or seven dollars and fifty cents per month increase residential property owners in twenty twenty three. Enables a town to provide the services that our residents expect while we also take into account our future plans. In other words, we must keep planning and investing for the future and make the appropriate investments. And not only our infrastructure, for example, but we must also need to invest in our workplace, our people, our staff. I will now ask Lloyd Crawford to guide a little bit to her.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor and to council, I guess I'm done. There's it.
Forgive me for the mask and the wheeling voice, but I'm just kind of getting over a nasty bug. Uh the report has an awful lot of information. It is kind of summarizing a lot of what you're going to see in this twenty five page budget for you. There's a couple of things I'd like to emphasize. You may have already heard them, but I really do want to emphasize it. The process is a little bit different this year. I've been here for a year now, so we're trying to make the process a little bit more expansive, a little more complete. And you know, and next year we'll do the same thing. We'll probably add in some more, you know, reporting and maybe get to it a bit earlier or later, depending on the wishes of council. Uh so there's a couple of things that really, you know, the C A O mentioned the reserves. So I'm expecting the reserves to be very similar to what they are right now, which is in the package. I can't say that for sure until we're finished the twenty twenty two year end. Um it was mentioned that we had a large tax supplemental. So basically, what that means is that there was a assessment that came on the roll. And we can, we got a fairly large chunk of cash in through from as a result from that. So that's where I think the reserves are being protected, which is through this this process. Um you heard, you know, the the gold star director up here and and then. Council Owen is talking about infrastructure and I don't wanna, I won't be the gold star guy, but. You're a bit of a downer, but the C A O mentioned it too. We have not really fully explored what the effect of the equipment side of our. Our infrastructure, if you want to call it that, i- is going to be. And this year's a poster child for that. And you see it in in the capital budget especially, there's not an awful lot of what is. Is what we call infrastructure. There's a paving contract, a lot of it is equipment and projects for for this and for that. Um but it's, I don't think it's an atypical year. I think what you're gonna see is you're gonna see a list like that every single year, whether it's from Aqua or from Works or from, you know. From uh community services or T P R or whoever it might be. Every year, there's gonna be stuff on that list. The asset management plan is going to help us prepare for it. Not really sure how well it does that at this point. Uh but certainly there's an awful lot of effort going into it to to produce data that we can start to think about this. First plus that ten year equipment plan that that's out there is actually fairly close to what the asset management plan was saying. Uh very draft basis. So, you know, that's the the downer part of my comments. It's that, you know, there is another half, maybe even bigger than half. Even though we we equate infrastructure with the really huge dollars. Well, you know, it costs four hundred thousand dollars to buy a loader, about five hundred thousand dollars to buy a fire truck. Uh this only takes two or three pieces of equipment a year to quickly outstrip the infrastructure when it comes to pure dollars. So anyways, you're gonna see that when we get to the capital discussions and and deal is kind of something to keep in mind. Uh with regards to the questions, I am very open to questions. And I may not be able to get back to you before the meeting, but I guarantee you, if you give me a question, you know, in between these meetings. I will be prepared to answer the meeting, the question at the next meeting. If I can't get it back to you in a reasonable amount of time. We will keep track of them. We will try to make sure that all of them are answered. You know, I'm the treasurer, so you know, if the question's kind of more council oriented. Um I'll probably push back and say, look, that's that's decisions for you guys to kind of take a run at. You know, if you're looking for an understanding of where the dollars are spent, where we want to spend them or how we're funding them. That's absolutely my bailiwick. I'll do the best I can. There's some of the actuals. So Owen, if you remember, last year when when he asked a question, I said, well, the actuals aren't perfect. Well, I can say kind of the same thing as this year, is the actuals aren't perfect. In particular, the cemetery and the T P R, they have kind of a different model of reporting. The cemetery has a trust model where the monies are treated a little bit differently. So it takes me a little bit longer and the staff to kind of get that in order. Plain and simple, I just haven't got to it yet. And a T P R is similar as well. It's funded a little bit differently than everybody else. It takes a little bit longer to just. Back to that. And so the revenue side of T P R is lighter. So when you get to the actuals and you say, oh, they're smokes, T P R wasn't a tank this year. We just haven't quite got to the revenue side of it. And it's also the obvious one. With regard to the schedule, just reiterate what you've already heard, which is, so tonight, we're just basically putting it in front of you. Having given you an opportunity to take a long, hard look at the at the numbers and. Again, if you if you want to put questions front, center before we get to next week's meeting, that's perfect. It gives us a better chance to come properly informed answers, not just winging it up here and maybe missing it and stuff like that. So um. Next week, the twenty ninth, that's the special meeting. So we will start with the open portion, which will be submitted questions from rate pairs and those who show up. They have a three minute limit, I believe. And then we will go into the presentations by the directors. Um what I suggested is, you know, while the directors are up here, I'll be up here as well. And that's the time to ask the questions on the operating budget, rather than saving them for the end or something like that. Each director has a nose their little piece of the pie, um to do a better job of answering your questions. So you know, that's ideally the time, but there's going to be some, they're gonna have some information. Speaking to some of the variations you're already seeing with them. Um so that's kind of what's gonna happen on the twenty ninth. So then the uh third, doing the same thing kind of again, capital, there's no open meeting at that point. But the capital is the same idea, we just work our way down through it. There's a lot of information in that capital this year. Last year was quite a bit lighter, but there's some descriptions there and stuff like that. Used a lot of reserves and that's really a function of what funding is available. You've heard it a couple of times already. And it is very difficult to find funding for for equipment, for that type of capital, which is very, very challenging. If it isn't related to, you know, so water and wastewater, there's a little bit of crossover in some of the funding sources. Um but normal, everyday equipment, the the plows, the graders, the fire trucks and that, there's just almost nothing out there that speaks to them directly. So you are planning around reserves, taxes, stuff like that, yeah. It's kind of the answers when we get to those things. But that's that's on the on the eleventh, uh sorry, the uh third. And then the eleventh is when you guys get to tell us what you think. And I don't, you know, you're gonna be asking questions over those next two meetings. And when we say budget deliberations, what I expect is that's when we're gonna make the changes that you want. So, you know, if you want to move this, change that, the deliberations meeting is kind of when it all comes together. And we we go through that process. Um, obviously, you know, I'll be taking notes all the time based on your questions and stuff like that, to get some idea of some of you will feel want to go, but. Um, you, the, the, I'm, I'm learning how it works here at this, this, this. Or the, the, the job, and, uh, you know, there's a process. So that meeting is really to exercise the process of making changes that, that you guys want. Should we get to that, and, you know, of course, we've left another meeting, and they're just case. Because depending on which year's budget you look at. You know, last year was a woo-hoo, got it done, but the year pre- previous to several meetings. And it takes several meetings, we've built in some time for that. Um, okay. And I think there's a couple of other things that, though I made the comment about the reserves not being ready. And there's something else, there's two other things that are kind of budget related, but not entirely budget related. It is certainly my goal to start improving the reporting, what you guys are seeing on the, you know. The, the actual results that are happening, I'm not sure when I will get to something really meaningful for you. I will promise at this point, you know, I will come back to council with a, a, so a reserve report. Once we have some kind of idea of how we're twenty twenty two affected the reserves, but I'm planning to do the same thing with capital. Um, I'd really like to kind of say, you know, you guys see it once a year. And then last year's kind of gets shuffled off to the side, and you don't necessarily know what happened in that mix. And certainly, there's, there's nothing being hidden, we would, we would tell you if something's gone sideways, and you've seen reports for, you know, like the loader, for example. Yeah, back or, or suddenly we had to come up with thirty grand more because the quote was different than the original quote. So you've seen, you know, the, the real issues, but I'd like to come, come to council with something that says, here's the project. Here's how far we've moved, here's the costs, and whether they're coming forward into, you know, multiple years. Um, so those are a couple of things that are, are budget related, but they're not kind of happening in the same timeframe. Um, that's pretty much most of what I wanted to get, there's a lot of dense information in here and then, you know, the twenty five pages themselves. So, uh, if you want to talk about the process tonight, I'm more than prepared, you want to talk about, you know, like I, you know, I pointed out to you, we have funding sources. So obviously, you know, we have taxation, we have outside funding. We have debt and we have reserves, and that's essentially how we pay for everything that we do. A- any of those kind of big picture stuff, be happy to talk about tonight, details, we're going hard next week.
Okay, as Mr. Cropper said, we're gonna try not to get too much into the weeds this evening with questions, we're gonna try to keep it a high level. Because we do have lots of time to get into the weeds coming up, so with that alliance, I'll, uh, open the floor to questions, Councilor Shaba.
Thank you very much, worship, I, this is not a question, just I'm looking for, uh. I'm looking for an item, I can't find it here, is there a way you can direct me to it, the item being. Uh, I don't know if you were here, uh, when we, uh, sold, uh, hockey heritage, uh, for a certain amount, I'm not too sure, it was a public. The only time, not to show where that amount would be, uh, uh, placed, and that's all I want to know.
It will be in these figures, it happened in twenty twenty one.
Okay.
The actual, the revenue from it, it happened in twenty twenty one, it was put into a reserve, if I'm not mistaken.
I saw a reserve.
So it'll be part of one of the reserves.
Thank you.
Councilor Ranger? Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor, um. Are the, are you using last year's bills from, um, these services? T H U and D S A, is that what I will be seeing in this or the left blank right now until those budgets or those bills have been approved?
A bit of a mix. So, the services budget, we have a good idea already of what they're going to charge us for twenty twenty three. And, and a couple of counselors approached me about the D S A and that health unit, so I put in their, their, you know. The range of their discussion at this point till we lock in their budgets, so there is increases. It's not going to be entirely absorbed, absorbed between the next few weeks, or suddenly the D S A and the health unit lock in their budgets. Um, so hopefully, we're pretty close on those ones as well.
Councilor Owen?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, to our treasurer, I just want to thank you for putting together a budget. In the form for dummies of accounting. Um, even I can follow the figures here, and I joke about it, but I really do appreciate it. Because I don't deal with numbers every day, and I don't deal with. Uh, spreadsheets and all that kind of thing, which is, tends to be what we got in the past. Here, we've got three columns, easy to read, you know, we've got the requests, we've got the, the graphics, which are very good. And, you know, so I appreciate that, thank you.
And, uh, to speak to that, and we're using new software, now we're starting to use new software, I'm playing with it a little bit. Um, the survey, you know, that was done, kind of. Leads to some of the presentation that I see, and, and helps you guys inform your decision making as well. You can see we have good responses. Uh, you know, almost a hundred people, which is a lot more than last year, now we brushed it a bit last year, but again. Um, yeah, so, you know, really gonna be better next year too, for, it's kind of a step process for us here.
Absolutely, Councilor Crowley?
Yeah, I echo what Counselor Owen has stated. Um, it's nice to get this clean report. Uh. We used to get a bundle of spreadsheets. Uh, that were just overwhelming for the average person to, uh, to understand, so I can understand, right, so.
It's on my desk.
Yeah, yes, we don't need to see that, uh, it's still, uh, I think. Since you've come on board, Lloyd, it's certainly, uh, we're getting more information on that and a clearer view of. The budget, where we're at and where we're going, so it's, uh, it's much appreciated.
Madam Mayor, thank you, um, like I said, that's, for me, it's a process. I don't feel like I'm there yet, but we're getting better. And, you know, the senior management team was much more involved this year. I think in, in the sense of, instead of just, here Lloyd, here's my budget. There was some back and forth, there was a lot of discussion, it went from the much larger number that was originally submitted to what you guys are looking at, it was a back and forth process. And, uh, I was pleasant at least, you know, I'm an accountant, we tend to. Be black and white type of guys, and it, it was, it was a good process, it's, you know. So we have something here that hopefully, you know, you guys can do your process now.
But I, just one thing I just forgot to mention, uh. The updates, quarterly updates, uh. We struggled a bit last year getting them on a regular basis, so, uh. That's key to us to see where we're at at any given time, so I just wanted to throw that in to keep that in mind.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, it was a promise I made that I failed on. I suggested last year that towards the end of the year, we'd start seeing something a little more timely.
Yeah.
Um, I have better tools now, and I think we're, you know, just progressing, been here a full year. Um, doing the best we can, it's, if you forgive me for fifteen seconds. The reporting requirements now for municipality have become almost. There, you know, we don't know how many, we're starting, I actually started a little mini project on the side just a few days ago with Joshua. Uh, the, the Deputy Treasurer to say, let's start keeping track of how many reports we're putting out, how many times somebody requests information, not necessarily internally. Externally, how many times does somebody want something and how much time and effort it takes? And my guess is, I'm gonna be shocked when you see the final kind of list, because since I've been here, it's just. You know, I don't think I go through more than three or four days without getting an email saying, whoops. Here's, here's next week's report, kind of thing, like this ministry or that department or. It's a lot of pressure in the system, it puts pressure on the experienced staff in particular, because it's not just an exercise in putting some numbers together and signing off on it usually. But, uh, you know, it's, it's what competes with council, unfortunately, in my world, and if it's a legal requirement, it ends up at the top. Thank you.
Absolutely, Councilor Dickens, uh, to you, Madam Mayor, to the treasurer, um. I appreciate how the budget process has been set up, um, the number of meetings and exactly what we're going to, uh. Look at, at each of those meetings, um, and also I appreciate the presentation like others have mentioned. Um, one thing I would like is kind of guidance to the information with respect to, we're, um. Unpaid property taxes, so it wouldn't be in here, but, um, just before we get into the budget deliberations. Uh, cause I've been asked, uh, by a number of people about that, so if we could just have an idea of, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you right now, they're similar to what they are in the past, they're a little bit better. In a sense, the, the number's not significantly lower right now, but the age of it is a lot better. Now, we have a list, we just in November, we sent to, I'm gonna say it's a hundred letters, it may not have been quite a hundred letters. Uh, kind of what we call kind of like final warning letters before we might act on it. Uh, and, you know, those were picking people that were three years old typically, low payments or no payments. And so that list is, is kind of low hanging fruit to take it to the next stage, which is tax sales or those kind of behaviors. We haven't quite got there yet, because unfortunately, the budget process chews up an awful lot of time of the, the tax person's time. Because we have to do some estimates and stuff like that. Uh, but it is absolutely in the, in the pipeline. And we're, we're, we've actually discussed even using a, call it a contractor, it's not, it's a firm that specializes in this. To help us, because we really only have one tax person to take on that many, uh, processes, whether you be on for, or, uh. Time lines. Anyway, just to, to very short kind of speak to that part of it. Um, yeah.
Um, yeah. Treasurer, um, could we get an idea of what amount, not, not, what amount, what we're giving them?
I will, I will, I will prepare with real numbers.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Shaba, did you have a follow up?
Uh, actually, I was, yeah, through you, uh, I, I had one, but, uh, Pastor Kylie, I stole that.
Sorry, I found the table.
But, I, I, I don't want to waste the time, I'm just, uh, maybe, uh, uh, move from the top and thank the C A O. And, uh, all the way down to the system management team, uh, for the job well done and putting this together for us to understand. You know, I really appreciate that, and I have what, uh, uh, Pastor Owen said, uh, my dummy part of it, but everything.
Everything's well presented, and, uh, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anything further from council members? I'll have the reading of the motion.
Moved by Councilor Rick Owens, seconded by Councilor Dan Franger, be resolved in Report Number twenty twenty three. Uh, been free entitled twenty twenty three operating capital budget you received for information. And find the deliberations regarding the twenty twenty three operating capital budget commence on Tuesday, April eleventh, twenty twenty three.
All in favor? All opposed, none noted, item carried unanimous. Item number seven, considerations of notice of motions. Um, before we continue, um, as per Article thirty in Bylaw fifteen dash oh seven five. Being a bylaw to regulate the procedures of council of the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake, it states. The proceeding, uh, presiding officer may state his or her opinion on any matter before council prior to the commencement of debate. Should the presiding officer wish to take part in the debate, he or she shall vacate the chair. And shall call upon acting chair to fill his or her seat until he or she resumes the chair. So that's why I don't really talk at council, because it's my job just to kind of. Um, get the business, um, keep the business going, um, but before I open the floor to debate on item seven point one, I will state the following. Um, I do preside over council meetings so that its business can be carried out effectively and efficiently. As per the municipal act, section two, two, five, A. My role is to provide leadership to council without limiting clause C to provide information. And recommendations to council with respect to the role of council described in clauses two, two, four, D and one. So as my, in my role of head as council, um, I do wish to. Uh, assist members of council. The council of the town of Kirkland Lake receives delegations for information that makes decisions when staff bring a report. We pass delegation requests through staff because it's staff's role to give a full view. An unbiased report based on years of expertise and experience in the municipal realm. Without an unbiased report from staff, council runs the risk of unintended consequences. Disruptions in relations with higher levels of government and partnerships with the communities we are actively working with. Though any request may seem benign, by not allowing staff to do their due diligence. Council, um, may put the municipality at risk. I've always said that members of the public are best served when they know what to expect when they deal with the corporation. Uh, delegations can expect council would allow staff to do their job. Though it may delay the outcome briefly, staff reports protect all members at this table. We did receive, um, some pretty in-depth training regarding this, but I'm pleased to announce that we will, um, be receiving additional training. Um, after budget as well, so with that, I open the floor for discussion, Councilor Shaba, please present.
Thank you very much, uh, through you, Madam Mayor, to, uh, everybody, uh, here, um. I think I'm gonna save us a lot of time by, uh, going through the backdrop of what led to this. Uh, I'm just gonna go right into the, uh, the motion, so, uh, this motion you see in front of you. Uh, to me, it is an acknowledgement of, uh, volunteers. Uh, we have a lot of volunteers in our community. Uh, it could be your sister, brother, neighbors, yourself and whatnot, and it put immense amount of time. Unpaid time, uh, to help the causes that you believe in. So this motion is, 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 is one of those, that's really part of that, that's, that's part of that, specifically, the volunteer group. Uh, that came here on February twenty first, uh, to, uh, two thousand twenty three. The alliance came here, and the issue they brought forward to us, uh, is a concern to us. And it is to be noted that, uh, the council delegated to rumor as well, just a few weeks before that, about the particular issue. So they came there asking for, uh, support. So what, what we've done, uh, what this motion is doing basically is to, uh, render that support. As an acknowledgement of the time and effort they put into it. And that letter of support that we're gonna have with this will go to them. And we're not asking a letter to go to anyone else, so. Um, I leave it up to you, uh, to do, uh, to vote, how you choose to vote. But the intent of this motion is to acknowledge the efforts of those volunteers, uh, and taxpayers too. Uh, they are, uh. The effort is, is to acknowledge the efforts of those taxpayers and the volunteers that are working on issue, that's very pivotal. Uh, to this community, some might say, well, listen, I don't care, the water over there is over there, the air over there is over there. But I can tell you that water and air, uh, my training tells me that, uh. They have the normal boundaries, so, once I pollute it, they pollute it, so. Without further ado, that's the motion, and, uh, if you want me to read that, Madam, uh, you'll read that. So that's my preamble to that, and, uh, it is now up to, uh, you to, uh, proceed, and I believe that, uh. I did ask for a recorded vote, I'm looking for if, uh, that, uh, still it is, but, but, yeah, I don't know my wish.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Uh, any questions or comments through council?
Councilor Dickens? Um, just for clarity, all, all the, from what I see, all that we're being asked to do is to, uh. Commend them for raising awareness of this, um, issue, is that correct, that's basically what we're.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, cause, yeah, cause, uh, personally, I didn't know too much about this issue, and then I looked into it after and, uh. I saw petitions, I saw various, um. Uh, First Nations groups are writing about their concerns, so I was really grateful that, for this presentation and, um. I would support that we just thank them for making us aware, um.
Councilor Ranger?
Through you, Madam Mayor.
Through you, Madam Mayor, um, it is my understanding that you're requesting a letter of to go to this volunteer group, correct?
Yes.
Like a hard copy document of council supporting?
Yes, and we have the letter, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we have.
It was, but that's not, I'm just making sure that Dolly understands that it's more than just acknowledging volunteer time that there's.
No, wasn't the volunteer time?
Okay, one person has time, please. So it was Counselor Ranger's time.
I just wanted to make it on record and clear that it wasn't the question wasn't answered or clarified, I believe that you understand what the motion fully involves. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Shaba? Okay, Counselor Owen?
Um, so I've had a few people reach out to me on this one, and since it was announced in the paper that you're gonna bring this uh motion back, and it's on both sides of the of of the issue, it's this, it's a device of the issue in town, and I want to make it clear, I support, I I I fully understand what they're doing. I support what they're doing. I just find there's a bit of pushiness on their part. When, and I'm gonna quote something they wrote, and this is where it gets to me, in the paper, they said, and this is off the article where you brought back um your intent to bring this back. We're a little disappointed that the town of Kirkland Lake did not choose to also add their voice to the problem. That's an outright lie. And it pisses me off, excuse my language, but it pisses me off when people choose to take information and manipulate it. We've got a motion here sent to the minister on March seventeenth by this council, moved by Mayor Kylie that stepped down from the chair and seconded by Counselor uh White that got sent to the minister about this. We delegated to Roma the week before council, so to say that we do not support them is a lie, outright lie, and it's frustrating for us that pay full taxes and have the benefit of municipal representation. And we can go, I go to Tim Hortons in the morning and people have their opinion on everything that we do and they voiced their opinion. These people, these individuals choose to live outside municipal boundaries, they're unincorporated areas. I'm sorry, I'm not gonna jeopardize any chance of our municipality getting funding or having some type of backlash because they don't have a municipal authority to go to. Their issue is they need to deal with the problems. They are the 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 operating authority, if you want, in that area, and they are the ones that can solve this issue. Not the town of Kirkland Lake. We have supported them in the motion, we went to Roma. I support what they say, I just don't agree with the way they're going, so I can't support this motion. I I think it would do more harm to the municipality than benefit, and especially when you manipulate information to say that, hey, they don't support us, well, guess what? We did. That's it.
Counselor Beckens?
Uh, through Madam Mayor to council, um. I have read your letter and and I read it as uh we're commending the efforts towards raising awareness and striving for short-term protection cooperation from municipal, sorry, Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, so I do understand uh what we're asked, we're not saying we agree with how they're going about things or whatever, but just that they were were on this awareness and that we uh support the uh Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing to to do their work as well.
Counselor Owen?
Through you, Madam Mayor, and I have my squeeze ball on hand, just for the record. Um, first off, I don't like being insulted in the paper, which is basically what I uh I took that article and it was an accurate article. Um, in that Fred reported accurately on what was said. Um, and then asked me to endorse them after they insulted council? No, that doesn't work for me. Second off, I know a lot of volunteers in this town. Uh, I myself put in more than thirty years in minor hockey and and uh women's hockey in town as well as years on Topper and I've read, I just want a minute. And when when I made delegations or when other people made delegations to council, we didn't write letters to tell them they're wonderful people. It's not part of our procedures, not part of what we should be doing. Um. And I don't see this group as any different than any other group that makes a presentation to council. Um, we've already delegated to the minister. And we've received assurances from the minister that this will be looked at in the spring. So this group now wants a letter, or we're proposing to send them a letter. But they're not, that letter's not gonna hang on the wall. That's not why they're buying it, to frame it and hang on their wall, they're buying it to promote their cause, which to me is a slap in the face when the minister's already assured us that something that is gonna be invested. Like, that's not how you treat the senior level of government. Um. In terms um, environmental issues that they seem to like to bring up. Uh, when I was looking for a recreational property in the area, I looked at two properties on Lake Canomie. One of those properties had a four-season cottage and a house that had two septic systems, both in use. One approved, one not approved. I looked at another cottage on Lake Canomie. Guess what? Septic system, not approved. And then they come here and they're worried about algae. I think they should look in their own backyard first. And some of the information that was sent out to me, the way I interpreted it, is that the regulations uh concerning development in unincorporated areas is that they be seasonal. Or that they be there because of their economic impact on that particular area. In other words, their operating business that has positive impact on the area. Now, to me, that says there should be no permanent houses, that are just houses in these unorganized townships. But we know there is, so maybe we should attack those people too. And from an environmental point of view, I uh, I don't claim to be an environmental expert. But my brother was, uh, very well respected. Uh, not just in this country, but in other countries as well, as an environmental expert. Um. And I consulted him often when I was a reporter. And a lot of the things that these people are doing is low carbon footprint on the environment. They're gonna be self-supporting, they're gonna grow their own food, they're gonna have small houses.
Counselor Owen, we're getting a little far away from the um request.
Well, okay, but the request is we support somebody that is not making factual decisions.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kylie?
Yeah, I I think part of the frustration from this group is now, according to FERUM, it's at least two years since uh the issue was brought up and and uh and has been brought to uh six different ministries. And the lack of uh timing, we know the government moves in a a snail space. Uh, and I think some of that frustration has come out from them, and they're looking to to garner more uh support. Uh, I believe this uh letter to be uh acknowledging uh what they've done to date and uh uh, we support the same concerns that they have. Uh, and that's good enough for me.
Thank you. That, Counselor Ranger?
Um, through you, through you, Madam Mayor to council. Um, I think my concern and issue, I wasn't at the presentation, I wasn't here for it, but I've done my, I believe I've done my homework. My concern is, and I'll put it in my perspective, is even at this level, we have a perceived chain of command when making requests for our own funding and levels of government and the steps that you need to take to follow proper chain of command. We have done that through our representation at conferences and through letters that have gone to the appropriate, through the appropriate means. Um, I'm not in support of the letter, they, simply because we have done it through our own pathway and our own, as the municipality and the corporation of town of Kirkland Lake. Um, they are from an unorganized township, they have their own pathway to go, they're looking um, for support and garnered it. As individuals, people can support and sign petitions. Um, but as representation of the appropriation of town of Kirkland Lake in the council, um, I'm not in favor of adding a letter uh with our name attached to it, uh, because they have their own methods and we have ours and we follow ours. And if at some point there's a way through our chain of command that we can, you know, address the town and our taxpayers' concerns as far as this development outside of our lot of tax lines, property lines, uh, we'll address them at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shaba.
Yeah, thank you very much, through you, Madam Mayor, and uh I'm I'm just gonna say a a few things. Uh, I've been uh been in this town for a long time. And I can tell you that uh, uh, in the north, uh, most of the things that uh we've got in the north here, most of it, anything that we never receive in the north here, we receive them through uh people just getting together and saying, well, we must make it happen, and it happens. I have the greatest respect for our allies, FERUM, and all these other people. Uh, they do a a good work, but uh all these things, things will not get moved along in the north without people, people, ordinary people, just saying they had enough, like example, we said the train state, the passenger railway, or the highway level. So when people come here, uh, Twitter tend to come here and talk to us about issues that we agreed that is not a good thing. Uh, and they're asking for a letter of support. Cause that's two things that they had a presentation, we have accepted a presentation, and there was an issue of letter of support. Uh, and they're asking for a letter of support, and in my view, uh, we should be really acknowledging the efforts and time that those volunteers did put into it. So either we give them a letter of support today or not, that's not gonna stop this group, they're gonna do what they need to do. But I did wanna be sure that we're not on the wrong side of history. Thank you very much.
Any further comments or questions from council? Sir Owen?
Madam Mayor, through you, sir clerk, may I go request a recorded vote on this, please?
Counselor Shaba has already requested that.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have the reading of the motion.
So I'm just for procedure, for procedure, I'll read the motion and then um I'll have the mayor call for another set of comments before I do the report, okay? Moved by Mayor Stacy, oh, sorry, wrong motion, moved by Counselor Vlad Shaba, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie, whereas the Canomie Watershed Ecological Alliance, KWEA, made a presentation to council at its meeting of February twenty first, twenty twenty three, surrounding the detrimental effects of the Gorial Force medieval vandalism, also known as BFMV. And whereas council is aware that BFMV and other non-for-profit organizations have purchased large acreage in unorganized townships within the District of Tomiscomay to build high-volume, in quotes, offered communities, close quotes. And whereas this council shared similar and the following concerns of the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing uh MAAH surrounding compliance with section one point one point six of the provincial policy statement, consultation with indigenous groups, compliance with the Ontario Building Code and regulations, compliance with the health and safety laws and regulations, compliance with environmental laws and regulations, reviewing land use compatibility, impacts to resources, pressures on local services such as social, medical, and other community infrastructure and financial burden or constraints. Therefore, be it resolved that council of the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake commends the efforts of the KWEA in raising awareness of this matter, and find that the commendation letter attached to this motion be forwarded to the KWEA.
Any further comments or questions before we take recorded vote, Counselor Shaba?
I just wanna comment that uh the this motion, as read, is what is being reflected on the letter going to the uh, to the group, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk?
Through Madam Mayor, if it's the will of council, I can read the proposed letter to council.
On fine, I've read them before. Okay, so we'll call for the recorded vote, um, yeah.
A recorded vote.
Yeah, that's me, sorry, the clerk will explain.
So a recorded vote has been reflected on the part of Counselor Vlad Shaba, Counselor Janice Ranger?
No.
Counselor Vlad Shaba?
Yes.
Counselor Casey Owens?
No.
Counselor Dolly Dykens?
Yes.
Counselor Rick Owen?
Nay.
Counselor Pat Tyler?
Yeah.
Mayor Stacy White?
Nay.
The motion has been defeated.
Thank you.
At this time, I will ask Counselor Shaba to take the chair to be acting mayor while I conduct my motion.
Good afternoon, item number seven point two, Mayor White, please.
Okay, so this um item came about because the town of Kirkland Lake received a request for a bursary from one of the high schools. Um, because of um obvious um issues with recruitment and retention in the public sector. Um, and as per the items mentioned in the motion, I thought perhaps this would be a good time to begin a bursary program in the name of the town of Kirkland Lake for local students of both high schools. Um, for those going into post-secondary education in public sector uh and political sciences or associated fields. Um, so because we're in the middle of uh deliberations, I wanted to put in principle and an amount that would not be cumbersome and could possibly go on perpetually. So we start it today and council in the future, um, knock wood that it doesn't get so bad that we can't afford a thousand dollars a year, that this will be something that this council starts, and we can see it for decades into the future.
Okay. Uh, are there any questions for, yes?
Through you, Acting Chair, uh, through you, Mayor who's seen. Just for clarity, you say I sum up to a hundred dollars, but is that divided between the two schools or is it a thousand? Sorry, a thousand dollars per school or?
Device.
Divided, okay, and just are we clarifying or being specific that it be political science at this point or?
Um, no, so the policy will come back, yeah, the policy will come back via staff.
Right.
So this is just in principle.
Okay.
So that allows them to give an amount, um, and they will write up the policy itself.
Uh, yeah, I think true, so then that will come back to us at some point, yeah, the perfect thing, thank you.
Yes, Council.
Yes, through you, Acting Mayor, to council, um, most of my volunteer work has been with young people in this community. And I think it's uh totally appropriate that we, you know, we're we're supposed to be an age-friendly community, which generally speaking, we think of seniors, but age-friendly is age-friendly. And I think it's 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 a great idea to show support to our youth. Um, and who knows, they may just come back and end up working here. But, you know, I mean, we see terrible things on the news about young people, but the vast majority of these people, and the vast majority in Kirkland Lake are really good young people, and I've worked with a lot of them, and I think it's time we show them we support them. Thank you.
Yes, Council, Ranger?
Through Acting Mayor?
Through Acting Mayor, um comments. Um, I work in post-secondary environment, I am so happy to um see this, I can tell you from experience that scholarships are absolutely needed for uh post-secondary education. If anything, I would hope that this amount may increase in the future. Um, and uh if staff need any support for me, for my day job, as to what a bursary could look like, I happily will um support them with any questions they may have, they can contact me directly. Um, uh, I absolutely agree with Counselor Owens that the message of, you know, support to somebody who wants to go on, whether they wanna stay and go to a local college or onto post-secondary anywhere else. We hope that the expectation is, and we do want youth to return um to their northern communities. Um, so I'm really happy to see this, thank you.
We'll strike out the local college.
Uh, through Acting Chair, uh to council, I think this is timely as well, I just uh wrote a report about the gap between north-south education and the availability for education for uh young people in the north, they say it's generally, they don't go right after high school, it's later and their possibilities are are um, are more difficult. So I know this may be symbolic, but I think it's really important that uh as a town, we show support to young people who are pursuing education.
Yeah. Anyone else? Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea, I, I work at college for thirty, thirty years or so.
Not a local college, well, a college, and and uh I, I did left a few uh scholarships uh there, that should be coming very soon. Uh, it's good to really assist young people, uh underprivileged students and minority students and all of that. Uh, I, I know treasurer, the money is packed and all of that stuff, but you know, uh this would be a money well spent, in my view. Uh, hopefully, if we can get uh uh businesses in town, now that we're coming out of uh COVID, you know, slowly we can get business in town, to at least uh help the, the high schools, you know, that's the kids that cannot uh make it to post-secondary education. I know I have two, I have two in post-secondary education, I do burning a hose in my uh Any more questions before we uh, we do our motion? None, let me start, please.
Sure, moved by Mayor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Whereas the Towne and Curtain Lake received a request for donation from ESCBN, a Casa Bonita Catalina de Voluntad for graduation bursaries. And whereas the Towne and Curtain Lake has begun budget planning and deliberations for twenty twenty three. And whereas according to the Municipal Youth Engagement Handbook, in, in quote, "The need for municipalities to encourage active citizenship among you, young residents is clear from the evolving state of Canadian workforce, workforce, post고." And whereas according to the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators, two thousand and nineteen, uh, who quote, "Attracting and retaining qualified employees ranks only subject to the economy as the most significant threat to municipal organizations today," post고. Therefore, be resolved that council for the corporation of the Towne and Curtain Lake hereby request an information report be presented investigating the viability of an annual bursary program to be dis- distributed equally to both local secondary schools and an amount that would be not be that would not be burdensome within the budget parameters. And that a policy be drafted and presented for implementation in the twenty twenty three graduation year. And finally, that the sum of up to one thousand dollars be approved in principle for the portion of the mayor council operating budget in twenty twenty three and future years upon such policy approval.
So just maybe, there the policy is coming back to us, alright, this letter of the month. And I've got the questions out in favor of the motion? Anybody against? Wish us carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shaba. Item number eight, introduction.
I have a notice of.
It's later.
These are consideration.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, number eight, introduction, reading and consideration of bylaws.
Moved by Counselor Patrick Kylie, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen, be resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, third, third time numbered, pass signed by the mayor municipal clerk, the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty three seventeen, be a bylaw to appoint the deputy chief building official and property standard officer for the corporation of the Towne and Curtain Lake.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimous, eight point two.
Moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Vlad Shaba, be resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered, pass signed by the mayor municipal clerk, the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty three eighteen, be a bylaw repealing bylaws twenty one ninety eight and twenty two thirty, which authorize a sale of land located at agreement, Hellby Avenue, and lots seventy four and seventy five, M one twelve on Temple Street. Respectively.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried unanimous, eight point three.
Moved by Counselor Janice Ranger, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie, be resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered, pass signed by the mayor municipal clerk, the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty three nineteen, be a bylaw to authorize the mayor municipal clerk to execute four early nonsense agreements with one a hydro one network signal.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous, eight point four.
Moved by Counselor Vlad Shaba, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens, be resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered, pass signed by the mayor clerk and the seal of corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty three twenty, be a bylaw authorizing the mayor municipal clerk to execute documents related to council's endorsement of the corporation of the Towne and Curtain Lake's breaking laws.
All in favor? Opposed? Now noted, carried unanimous. Questions from council staff, item nine point one. Um, yeah, I don't, yeah, Counselor Shaba, uh status update, proposed Chappy Hughes Playground project. The recommendation is coming from, um, no, sorry, the report is coming from C O Allen Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to members of council. Uh, after council approved the location of the playground last year, our Fine Services Division request, requested that locates be completed so staff could figure out how much space we had to work with for the structure. Now, although there was fall up out of town, locates were not completed in twenty twenty two. Um, they were months behind, and that we experienced similar delays to the other customers. The Director of Public Works, uh this year, will be putting in the locate request again. And as soon as this step is completed, we can then get quotes of equipment that would fit in this space we have. Those dollars spent in twenty twenty two. So we are looking to get those locates, and it just took this out of our hands. But we do intend to, those locates and get this moving.
Yeah, item nine point two, oh, sorry, motion, any questions?
Uh, yes, I, I was sorry.
Okay, Counselor Shaba. Oh, I usually don't like this.
Through you, you mentioned, we just said locate, so you're talking about things like gas lines and
Yes.
One, I, I assumed that's what you meant, but I, I didn't know if you're talking, like, property lines.
Uh, no, it, to Madam Mayor, to uh council, yes, it would be the gas lines, how do we look second?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor Kylie, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay, Counselor Shaba.
Yeah, uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. CEO, for the update. Uh, I just wanna know our the funds for this playground, have they been all replaced, or is something that's uh still in progress? We're trying to uh secure them, uh for the initiation and subsequent completion of the project. Is that a, can you share with us?
Uh, to Madam Mayor, to members of council, I have to check with our treasurer, but I think maybe the president be hearing forward, but
That's exactly what's happening. There was no outside funds identified for the project, so last year it was part of the budget through, through council's motion. So what happens if the funds are unexpended, they go into the, one of the reserves, and they sit there until the project starts up again. So we funded out of reserves this year.
Anything further?
I'll have the reading of the motion. Moved by Counselor Vlad Shaba, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie, be resolved that council received this path's update on the proposed Chappy Hughes Playground, excuse me, uh project from the Chief Administrative Officer for information purposes.
All in favor? All opposed? Now noted, carried unanimous. Item nine point two, Counselor Shaba, the Towne and Curtain Lake and the multicultural centers relationship, assistance and liaison. Again, um toss over to Alan Smith, C O.
Just a, just a point of, just a point of clarification, I, I, I call them multicultural center. In fact, they're multicultural group, so, just that.
There you go.
Make another that, thank you.
Uh, to Madam Mayor, to members of the council. Currently, uh as far as assistance goes, we do not provide any natural assistance to them. However, our Director of Economic Development, uh will, um, he is our liaison with them. For example, if there is a project or something in that realm is happening, uh will probably normally be in attendance. If there's the event, we'll, we'll go to the, the attendance of that event, so uh, he is our liaison, they can, we do, we don't provide any natural assistance uh to that, to the group.
Okay, um, the um, the group is up, they've been around for a long time. And there's no question that we've been doing a lot of work for the new people coming to uh Curtain Lake. So, um, when they do have uh events and activities, so we are, we are aware of them, uh through our liaison, so that we can be part of it. Communicate that we have a liaison, that's what I had in, I had in mind. When they have events and after, after, I go to the one in general, at the moment, uh, uh, I try to go to this one, but when they have events and activities there, is that something that our liaison will attend and report back to us, or what is, what is the role of the liaison?
I think, Madam Mayor, to members of council, the liaison is a, um, I was gonna say it's more like an informal relationship, really. Uh, you know, it's not like the official comeback for the council, less it was a uh, something that we deemed council should be made aware of. Uh, recently, we did meet with them regarding, um, uh, if we won't, um, become our winners. Uh, so we're working with them on a couple things, so, um, but in an official capacity, um, you'll be, we try to maintain that relationship and attend events when we can, basically.
Through you to, uh, to keep it validation, bringing up the director.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, yeah, yeah. Could, um, Miss Sackrider also is, so she gets involved in the activities of group and I'll quite speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, to the rest of council. We were the recipient of um a bit of a delegation to some staff from the Ukrainian community a little while ago, and they brought up some really good ideas of things that we may want to become involved in that would assist newcomers to Curtain Lake, and it wouldn't just be the Ukrainians, it would be anybody who's a newcomer. It could be a newcomer from Timiskamy shores to Curtain Lake, or it could be someone of a foreign background. And they had a number of ideas, some were outside of our scope, some were very easy for us to probably complete in the very near future. So one of the ones that we would like to work on, that would be done by staff in-house would be to have information available to newcomers to Curtain Lake about what does Curtain Lake have to offer. So it could be as simple as, we have a public library, if you live within the, the municipality, it's free for your use, these are the hours. We do have recycling, we bought dates fall on these weeks. We have an outdoor ring, it's free for use. So it might be those types of things, and we would like to do it so it's not like the program guide that the complex offers, where it's, you know, you have swimming lessons for level three-year-olds on Tuesdays. It would be basically, we have a community complex, this is what it offers, here's the website, here's a phone number um of the different amenities we have in Curtain Lake. So we thought that would be a really good first step. Um, we have all the data, we just have to put it together, and we talked to different department heads and managers to find out what are the common things that you get asked, when is a newcomer to Curtain Lake. So we thought that would be something that we could easily do in-house. Um, and it would be fairly timeless in the fact that it wouldn't have dates and times and prices, they would just have information, and we could update it regularly.
Counselor Ranger?
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, to uh, Miss Sackrider, I'd like to make this suggestion, um, that uh you can add a button on your website, new to Curtain Lake, click here, and it would provide all that information. It's uh something that we have specific to our international students at Northern College, week year orientation practices. Um, because they are newcomers, and there's a lot more involved, uh, a domestic student or an international student coming. So, um, that can be, instead of like hard copies, it all being available, but it, an easy click on the website for things that they would be, but I think it's a great thing.
Counselor Owens?
I just wanna make sure that Curtain Lake's got several groups that help or benefit our community. So I would hate for this one to be singled out or get preferential, preferential treatment versus other, so any group that wants a partnership with the town can have that partnership, can approach the town and have the discussion, not just this one specifically, right?
No, to Madam, yes, correct.
And it's important to note that I think we're talking about two separate entities. So the question is asked with the multicultural groups specifically, they have not come specifically to talk to myself or um staff, that was um the Ukrainian council specifically. And um a local, very, very wonderful volunteer, Michelle Whelan, who just does so much for uh the Ukrainian community, um, and it is something, um, immigration is something that comes up time and time again, I, I reported on it several times in my um mayor's report, that is something that we're going to have to think about in our strategic plan, um, moving forward. So I appreciate that Counselor Shaba asked the question, is there anything specific to the question that I've asked? As we do, we get off topic. So Counselor Owens, you have anything to add?
Uh, I'm not sure now. No, I think one comment that uh, Miss Sackrider made was that this booklet would be good for everybody, even if you just moved from Timiskamy shores, and I wanna emphasize that because as I was sitting I was thinking, yeah, like normally a chamber will do that. But often chambers do that, they have a welcome, well, they used to, I don't know, but I'm not up to date, and, and they would you know, busy with a basket of stuff, and it would have all this information in it. So I think, you know, in, in addition to people immigrated to Curtain Lake, it, it would be ideal for like town hall, complex, um, the library, the library, the museum. Yeah, I think it's a low-cost, effective way of helping.
Yeah, Counselor Kylie?
Yeah, I, I think this is great, uh, we don't have a welcome lane, like we used to have in the old days. So it, it takes the place of that, and uh, it welcomes immigrants, people from within the province or outside the province. Uh, great idea.
Counselor Shaba, anything to add?
Yeah, um, I just want that through you, Madam Mayor, I just want to uh, don't distract me. Uh, I just want that, that maybe we should look at uh uh in putting what you're saying together, we should look at best practices from maybe City of Clemens and North Bay, uh, did cause something going, uh, there to uh, welcome, I mean, people to, to their cities, not just from uh foreign countries, would be maybe nearby town shop or whatnot, so maybe we should look to that and put that together.
Yeah, so Alan's gonna speak for that?
Madam Mayor, um, right now, our Director of Economic Development does sit on the rural northern immigration program, this is part of that, so uh, we are kept in the loop that way, and as a very work坊 program, and we're, I'd be part of it.
But anything further from council? I'll have the reading of the motion.
Uh, moved by.
Thank you, um, Madam Sackrider. Holy mat.
Seconded by Counselor Janice Fraser, be resolved that council received information surrounding the Towne and Curtain Lake's relationship with a multi-cultural group. Uh, assistance and liaison from administration for information purposes.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried. Item number ten, notice of motion, Counselor Kylie.
Want to uh promote, uh, present a notice of motion on homelessness.
promote, uh, present a notice of motion on homelessness. And, uh, hopefully affordable housing, if we can stretch that into it at the next meeting.
Thank you. Item ten point two, myself, I will be introducing uh, a motion regarding Ontario School Board trust elections. And both of these will be coming forth at the regular council meeting of April fourth. Okay. Item number eleven, council reports. Any council members have anything to report since we last met?
Uh, I don't have a report or clarification from, uh, Madam Sergeant. We got all this correspondence from you, uh, about, uh, you know, book to read, lost reading, all of that. And it's one that, uh, the oath of office. I don't remember that. Uh, and so when we get this, are we supposed to introduce a motion similar to that to go around or is purely for our information?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to all of council and councillor, uh, Shaba specifically. So you'll note that we've been receiving, uh, council members have been, uh, putting forward more notices of motions as of late that they're stemming from that correspondence. So any member of council that wishes to bring forward any of those items, uh, the notice of motion to be discussed at this table, amongst your individual council, as your, sorry, your respective council, you may do so by bringing a notice of motion based on that correspondence that you received.
Okay, I would like to bring one on this one. As I said, okay.
Okay, so this is the spot we knew it before.
Okay, so yeah, you can announce it now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna announce that, that I will bring a motion regarding the oath of office. Okay.
For the April fourth meeting.
That's correct, okay.
Okay, now moving on to councillors' reports, any council member with anything to report since last meeting? Okay, so I shall move on to mine. Uh, since our last meeting, date March seventh, twenty twenty-three, the Office of the Mayor has attended the luncheon and tour of E P C Canada, which is the old Nordax in Dean, to unveil their, the renovations of their plan. Uh, this company has been in operation since the seventies under different management, but they remain a staple industry within our area, providing employment to at least twenty-five individuals. We attended a meet and greet in New Wisford with Associate Minister of Transportation Stan Cho on the fourteenth. This was an intimate gathering of about twenty-eight invited guests. The biggest thing to note is that the town of Kirkland Lake had a reserved spot at the head of the table beside the president of Honon, Danny Whelan, and one seat away from the associate, um, minister himself. I believe this does show Kirkland Lake is moving in the right direction. We also attended the unveiling of the recently purchased rail cars, which will be servicing freight customers in the area. Um, with, uh, members of, uh, Ontario Northland, the Associate Minister um, and Director of Rail Transportation. Uh, that was an Ingo car on the fifteenth, and each of these rail cars takes four transports worth of load, which ultimately makes our highway safer. Um, I joined the Northern Ontario Women Caucus. After the twenty twenty-two election, women represent over forty mayors and over two hundred and twenty-two council seats across the province. We will continue to encourage and support women in politics. Kirkland Lake now holds the co-chair position for the two S L G B T Q plus steering committee. The steering committee is part of Timmins Pride, whose mission is to unite and engage individuals and organizations to educate, advocate, and support the two S L G B T Q plus community in Timmins and surrounding areas. This is another positive partnership with our neighboring communities. I also drafted the twenty twenty-three confirmation letter of Northern, for Northern College. I want to personally thank councillor Dykens, as I reached out to members of council with ties to the college, as I was having some major writers walk. Um, and though she thought she couldn't help much, what she provided was certainly inspiring. She was always too humble, but her help was greatly appreciated. Um, and I want to commend the Rhodes team on their excellent service. Saturday morning, before eight A M, the sidewalks from Chappie U's to at least twenty-five, please, mayor. Um, were graded, or were, um, down to, no, sorry. Were cleared from Chappie to Civic and sound, sanded in the downtown core. This does increase the safety of pedestrians in our community, and your efforts did not go unnoticed, so excellent job. And now, finally, for the best part, a reminder that tomorrow we will be having two school visits, ten A M, with a class from Saint Jerome and one thirty with Central School. And I hope all members of council who have time can pop in. Apparently, the kindergarteners know all of our names and they're very excited to see us. So, you know, truly sharing what we do with the community is the best part of sitting on council. So thank you for that. I'll have the reading of the motion.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Rick Owen, be resolved of the verbal updates from members of council received.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted, carried unanimous. Item number twelve, inform, additional information, there is none noted. We will now take a ten-minute, uh, break and then we will go into phase. Okay, so we are reconvening, item number thirteen, closed session.
Moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor Rick Owen, be resolved that council apparent camera pursuant to section two thirty-nine-two of the municipal Act two thousand and one amended to discuss personal matters about an Indian tribal individual, including municipal or local board employees. Labor relations or employee negotiations, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada, a province or territory or a current agency of any of of them. And a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to a negotiation carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board at six forty-nine for the following reasons. Item thirteen point one, community complex retrofit project federal funding. Item thirteen point two, fire services update.
All in favor? Okay, so we now found reconvening and open session, Adam Kirk. The council reconvened and opened session at seven twenty-four P M.
Moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Patrick Riley.
All in favor? Opposed? Item carried unanimous. What, uh, there was no declaration of a culinary interest in in camera. Item number fourteen point one, approval of the community complex retrofit project.
Moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Janice Ranger, be resolved that report number twenty twenty-three C S oh oh one entitled approval of the community complex retrofit project be received. And finally, that council approved the community complex retrofit project totaling two million nine hundred and ninety-seven, nine, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety. Let me restart. Two thousand, two million nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars, complete with eighty percent federal funding.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item fifteen point one, uh, confirmation bylaw.
Moved by councillor Janice Ranger, seconded by councillor Rick Owen, be resolved with the following bylaw be read, a first, second, and third time numbered, passed signed by the mayor clerk and the seal of the corporation to be fixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-three oh oh one, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held Tuesday, March twenty-first, twenty.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted. Item carried unanimous. Item sixteen, adjournment.
Moved by councillor Dolly Dykens, seconded by councillor Patrick Riley, be resolved that this would at seven twenty.
Yeah. Thank you, one and all. All in favor? None opposed? Item carried.